Call me in order to stand for pledge. All right. We have Stacy Kuhn is virtual. Kristen is sick. Amador, myself, and Nancy are present. That all being said, we are to the superintendent report.
The first item is an AOK award. Is Jacob Fisher online?
Not yet.
When will he be?
I said the parent of late. She says she can hear me if I'm on.
We can come back at the end of mine and then try it again.
Okay.
Why did we go virtual until the 19th of January? I did that because two reasons. The county health department recommended that we do that. And it gave us time from the activities of Christmas and New Year's to take it, run its course, and hopefully reduce the number of cases involved in the school district. The county did ask all the superintendents to do it. We were the only ones that complied. And I think it's a good idea. There's some questions about the A and B group. There's going to be something posted on the website if it's not already there that will show that by the end of the year, the A and B groups will be equal in the number of days that they attended school in person. There's also a letter that will be going out after this meeting that explains the need for two dates. January 15th, February 8th, which is already a conference day, and March 5th will be synchronous days, asynchronous days. That will give time for students to catch up on information and the teachers to do some catch-up as well. And I will note in the memo that I send out that many schools have Wednesdays off every week. Wednesdays are catch-up days. My granddaughter goes to a school, a public school, and they have asynchronous two days a week, synchronous two days a week, and Wednesdays off. I think most of the schools in this county have Wednesdays as non-new instructional days. That's 40 days lost by the end of the school year. And our kids have more contact time, more learning time than any other kids in the county. And I think that's a plus for us.
Hold on, John. Nobody can hear you. I just got a text message. Should we move this closer, Tracy, that we can hear it?
All right, let's see.
Let us know if that's better.
Scott, can you hear us? All right.
Stacy, can you hear us? Okay. Very good.
Is Jacob Fisher online?
Not yet.
Well, the last thing I have to talk about is what does the future hold? My hope is that with vaccines and if we step up the vaccination program and people comply with getting a vaccine, I'm optimistic that next year we might be able to have school that looks more like the past. The governor is pushing for us to have kids back in school. Sullivan County is currently at 8.9%. In the past, the governor said if it got to 9%, he would mandatorily close the schools. He's changed his tune on that. And there's an issue in New York. The economy is in very bad shape. Broadway closed. You figure all the restaurants that aren't doing business, the hotels, the travels, Uber, and all the other conveyances. We're in bad shape in New York, and he's trying to get the economy going. But we're not going to have kids come to school if they're going to be at risk of getting COVID or bringing it back home. Kids don't have the same reaction to this virus as adults. And if we bring kids back too soon, they'll bring the virus back home, and we'll have a problem that we don't have now. We have very few cases in Eldred, and our goal is to keep it that way. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McGonner. Any questions for Dr. McGonner from the board? Nothing? All good? Thank you. Elementary principal, Mr. Krebs.
All right, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, great. I had three items to just go over with you. I know that, you know, going back to December was a long way, but we, it seemed like yesterday that we were there. So on December 9th, when we were in session at the elementary school, we were able to participate in our first of two computer-based testing simulations. And we did that with our math group. So the students that were in person did the simulation in person, and the ones that were at home did the simulation at home. We had pretty much all of our students take the simulation, whether they were in person or at home, other than we had some internet connection issues. We had some, you know, but we addressed those. And it was a simulation. It was an attempt to have the children, because as you remember, last year, our third graders did not have the, we didn't do computer-based testing. We did no tests last year. And so this year, we did it for our third and fourth graders, would have been a group that did not have testing. And so we'll see how that goes this year. So we did our computer-based test. The simulation went well. We were anticipating to do another one on January 12th. We're going to hold off on that. But we're anticipating, as everybody else is, is that the assessments will still take place in April and May. Have not heard otherwise, but we're prepared for it if we are ready to go for it. On December 14th, the elementary school, we moved over in School Tool, which is our student management system. The teachers take attendance using that, and now they're able to record remote attendance. So when the students at the elementary school, we were only doing attendance, and now we're able to do whether they're in person in class or in-person remote. So that started on December 14th. And lastly, we were able to roll out, thanks to our Sullivan County Bosse's Library Support Cooperative. That's the Bosse's that we receive a co-op from, a coaster from, that was a thing for news-o-matic. It's a social studies program that they provided to us free. So we rolled that out for our teachers. At the, I believe it's a K-8 program. It provides a listing of news that happened that day or within the last couple of days that teachers and children can log into, read a news article. And they're Lexile leveled. There's three different levels. So the children at the elementary school can read on their level. And it gives the same information of the article, whether or not they're at a lower reading level or a medium reading level or a higher reading level for each one of the articles that are given. So I thank Lori Bizjack. She assisted in getting the news-o-matic for our school. So that's the three things that I have to share with you this evening and look forward to seeing you again in February.
Thank you, Mr. Krebs. Any questions from the board for Mr. Krebs? Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Secondary principal report, Tracy.
Do you want me to move?
No. Okay. Okay.
Um, we actually, can y'all hear me if I get closer?
Scott, can you hear her?
Can you hear it?
Okay. Um, and to go along with December was actually kind of busy, even though with everything going on. We also did our computer-based simulation in preparation for the seventh and eighth grade state assessments. We took care of that. We are all ready to go. We did our technology checklist for the state. If they still have the assessments in March, we are ready to go with that. We had no problems here, no connectivity issues, no internet issues. It went great. Our current technical educators from Sullivan County Bosse's visit our sophomore English classes. And that's because we are already thinking of 2021, 2022 schedule and the calendar and everything. So they came to visit and talk to the sophomores about the different choices they have at THOTech if they would like to take advantage of those. I would like to say congratulations to our newest members of the Math Honor Society, Nu Alpha Theta. And that's Gabby Del Rio, Abby Bizjack, Caitlin Potter, Mackenzie Simonson, Alexia Gingold, John McGary, and Tatiana Quintana. This Math Honor Society, it is, you have to have a certain level of math, certain grades. So it is an honor society. They also offer math tutoring. So if any kid needs math tutoring, all they got to do is get in touch with Mrs. Zub, and she will connect them with a kid to. We also had three students participate in the Hartwick University Virtual Honor Band back in October and November. This was done all virtually. That is Jada Reed, Owen Anderson, and Caitlin McGary. They actually had the, students had the opportunity to interact with two composers. One was internationally known composer John Mackey. The students gave up Saturdays. They gave up a lot of their own time. They spent weeks preparing lessons. And they also recorded themselves playing at home. And then the Hartwick University put it all together. So if you go to our website, uploaded two of the YouTube videos so that everybody can see. So you see all of the kids playing. It's really cool. And it's, you know, just how we've adapted to the way of music education for this current year. We also got notified that AP exams will take place in June this year. They have historically always taken place the first two weeks of May. We do not have those actual dates. They're supposed to be coming from College Board. They will be full-length. In the spring of this past year, they did shortened tests. But they will be full-length, and students that are at home virtual can utilize and take the actual test on a kiosk mode. So they're able to practice remotely. From our student representative, who was not able to be with us tonight, the only announcement she had was a mask fundraiser. Student Council is actually selling Eldred masks. Black mask, and they have yellow jacket on the side. They look really cool. They're $7 each. And that is, Ms. Takowski or Ms. Walsh will take anybody's orders. And those orders are due by the 22nd of January. So then we can get them in quickly. Seven bucks a piece, and they're really cool. And that's all I have.
They should include a Gertrude Hawthorne.
I will ask them to include Gertrude Hawthorne.
I'll buy two.
The only thing else I have is just a short presentation on the, what we're doing as far as targeted schools and our school improvement. So I'm actually sharing my screen, and it's like five slides. It's very quick.
And we were identified as a targeted school, literally for a handful of kids that didn't do well. And we were unable to get out of it last year because they didn't give the state test. So until they give the state test again, we are a targeted school. But there is, the plus side of that is, how much money did we get?
Uh, available pop on credit?
Yeah, we got $100,000 per year for the TSI portion of it, $50,000 for planning.
So.
For how many years?
That is, as far as I know, until we're off. But you're supposed to try to get off within three years. Or was it two?
So that's the flip side.
That's on the educational side.
You ready?
If you're in a road, you have to have approval.
And I'm assuming they can. So you can also, I'm assuming you can see this. Scott, I have to say it's verbal, if I have it.
Yes, we can see it and can hear you. So it came up nicely.
Okay, so we have, this is how we mentioned our college plan. This is our 2021, 2020, 2021 priorities. Now, these priorities, there are five of them. Three of them came out of state regulations. So we had to include chronic absenteeism. We had to include literacy DLA. We had to include the math program. Other two items, the strengthen our RTI, our NTSAS program, which is the Response to Intervention, and then our communication to stakeholders. Those came out of the survey to the parents. And that's where we got those two priorities about career college planning, the counseling, just the support services that we have, and then the communication.
That makes sense.
So that's where those two things came from. And like I said, also for our disappearance service. So the priorities that we had to come up with, one, is to improve our overall attendance percentage. And this is because increased attendance is directly correlated. We know it's tied to academic achievement. We have done better. We are continuing to do better. Anthony does an amazing job with doing home visits and different checks. And he's been doing a lot of deliveries for our kids. So we just have to continue with our increased attendance. And then the state asks for our actions. What would we do? Again, pay attention, follow up, contact your family, the communication between the school and the families, and actually over our social messenger, our iMessages, emails, actual face-to-face contact, phone calls. And we also have to ensure accurate rate repeat in our student management system. That's what Scott alluded to with the remote button being added to our, the school tool so that we could actually count them as present to go along with, so we can ensure our accurate rates. We decided to, with one of the parents, or with the parent surveys, and taking all that data, this, we decided to, one of the priorities is to strengthen our Response to Intervention program. And that includes tier one and tier two supports. If we strengthen those, that will improve attendance and in turn improve academic performance. And then our literacy program, this is the state mandate. If you're not toward our DLA or literacy program, if you are TSI, and this is to increase academic achievement, to make sure our curriculum is aligned with state standards. And again, if we improve our literacy skills, that will improve mastery in across content areas and academic success. If you can read, you feel successful, and in turn feel successful in terms of school. Math program, same up this with literacy program. We have to make sure, increase our academic achievement, ensures that our math curriculum is aligned with state standards. We are in the process of application, making our new math program and different professional development that we just are. And then the last thing is communication with all stakeholders. And again, if we are communicating with our stakeholders, our parents, our community members, that will increase academic achievement. That will increase attendance. And they're all tied together, so that would be really cool. Now, the upcoming actions, I actually have a meeting next week with Title I and School Improvement Team Committee. And that is, we're going to generate an action plan that addresses different priorities. I do have four parents that have volunteered to be on, which is awesome. And then I've got Title I. I've got teachers, administrators. So we actually have a nice group that will generate this action plan and working on moving us forward. And then again, professional development for teachers and teaching assistants will start again in February and continue throughout the rest of this year and to next year. So that's what this is.
And you know my statement about communication. This is not general motives. We should be able to communicate effectively.
Yes.
What is our attendance number? I know last year we were, 92%, 94%?
We're roughly at the same, 92, 93%.
We are.
And the state with the latest documentation and about allowing that remote feature, we actually have to go back in through, back to September. And we can try to, you know, not try, but actually get the accurate percentage. Because for the longest time, it was, the state was trying to decide whether remote counted and if it counted for a full day. So we are in the process of going back to September to make sure our percentages are where we believe they are, and we can prove it with state authority.
But it's remarkable that they're similar to when we had in school.
Right. Is this an attendance part of our state aid, Caleb?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is. It's one of the components.
That's why I asked, because I know if it goes up, we go up.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that will help us get off the TSI.
Right.
Code to put on a tenant, because that automatically put us on another year.
Right.
But we do get money. So.
Yeah. Yep.
So any questions?
Any questions for Tracy from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
All good? Thank you, Tracy. Caleb, you're up. Come on over here.
Yep. Always got his book. Good for you. All right, well, mine is a pretty quick one. It's not a lot happened in between December and January. But our audit is complete. You're going to see that that's on your agendas to approve. There were no major findings. There were some minor things that were just spoken to management in terms of internal controls. But our unappropriated fund balance is up over the 4%. So we met that goal sooner than we had expected. I know we originally started a plan to improve the school's finances. We thought it would take three years, and we did it in two. So that was excellent timing. Audit results were good. We started transitioning our business office. We have both employees in. This last payroll was done entirely by us, with the exception of printing checks, which are still up at Bosse's, but we'll be taking that back by the end of this month, too. I did push up the date with which we're completely divorced from Bosse's to March 1st. That's so that they can prepare our 1099s and W-2s, because they did all of the payroll for the year. And I thought it could be a mess if we cut it off while, during that time. But otherwise, that's been going smoothly. And we're on pace to have our own business office up and running completely. We're just starting the preliminary budget. There are still a lot of important numbers that aren't in yet, so I don't have anything that I can report to you yet. The state aid runs haven't come out yet. We don't have what the tax cap would be. And we're still uncertain about whether the state's going to get some money because of the political, the political climate. So we haven't lost our 20% yet, and that's still kind of up in the wind. And that makes a preliminary budget difficult to come up with. There was some grants approved in this latest round of coronavirus, of which we would probably be entitled to, but of which I do not have a number for yet. That was very recent. It was passed over the Christmas break. That's what led to everybody getting the $600 checks. Well, buried in there is education funding. So there's an additional round of grants coming. I just don't know how much we're going to get yet. And other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
I just want to say that our journey to fiscal stability was a team effort. But you played a major role in that, and it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
You stole my thunder.
You stole my thunder again.
I have a question for you. So the 20% has not been taken from it yet?
Uh, it was taken only from the last payments of 1920. So the accounts receivable for 1920, there was a chunk of money. They took $110,000 out of that. It's withheld. So you said he hasn't cut it officially yet. He just hasn't paid us. So in other words, he's holding it back. It's still sitting on the books as, you know, he owes it to us.
Well, it was, correctly, our home was up to 30%, right? Or 40%?
No, they settled at 20.
Settled at 20.
They settled at 20. And then they held off on it, saying they were going to wait to see what happened with the politics up in Washington. And that's still playing out right now. So, you know, depending on what happens with this Georgia election, we'll see if they pass some state money. There's no guarantee that all 20% is going to come back to the school. But a portion of it might, if they say give, you know, whatever.
But we planned on this.
Correct. Yeah, well, we planned on 20%. So anything else is, yeah, is wonderful. We're operating as if that 20% is not coming in. So we're not spending it. We're not, it's not there. So if, you know, if he cuts it by 10, then we'll decide what to do with that additional funding afterwards. It does look like it's not going to be quite 20%. But that's just an opinion. That's, they haven't announced anything.
Good job.
Any other questions for the board for Caleb?
Yep. Oh.
Thank you, Caleb.
Well done.
Yep. These are mine.
Whoa, 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 you just took mine.
No, no, those are mine.
Are they?
Yeah, those are mine. I brought them with me.
You thief. I had one of them.
Did you?
They're there. I had one of them.
All right, then that one's yours. Yeah, I have two.
I did take one piece of paper from yours.
All right.
You caught it.
I don't really have anything except for, Dr. McGonner stole a little of my thunder. I just, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Caleb for the work that he does do for us. We, when the new board came in and Dr. McGonner, we were, we were in pretty tough shape. And as you can see now, our numbers are where they need to be. And we're very, very strong in that, in that end of it. So, and that makes me happy because that was one of the part reasons why I ran. But with that all being said, we're in good shape, as you can see. And I hope that 2021 will be a better year for us. And everybody, please, still practice the masks, the social distancing and everything like that, because we have some people that are sick right now with it that we know personally. And it's not fun. And we don't need to have anybody part of this team or any family members catching this. It's not a good thing. So please practice, keep practicing. The vaccine is out, but it's not 100%. And it's not going to make any of this stuff go away real soon. So let's try to keep focused and stay focused and get through this, and we'll be in good shape. Thank you. Tracy, you did the student report, so we're good there, right?
Yes.
Okay. We're up to public comment on the agenda items only. Public comment.
We have none.
Have none? Okay, so like, like I always do, if they come in later on, we'll, we'll address them then.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we were up to approval of the consent items. I need a motion to approve consent items 4.01 through 7.04. Motion by Nancy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Amador. Any discussion from the board on any of the consent items? All good?
Good.
All good? Okay. That's done. Old businesses, is there any old business to come?
We didn't vote, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't vote. You're right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. You're right, Amador. Yep, very good. Any old business to come before the board? Okay. New business, any new business to come before the board? Okay, so I have three walk-on motions here. I'll try to read them and get through them here. Resolution. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools of the Board of Education, hereby approves motion of defying of the Board of Education hereby approves motion of defiling for the 2020-2021 school year. As per the faculty association contract, Bonnie Padua will be paid for an additional one extra period for the AP physical lab for grade 12, meaning every other day. The days are paid for additional period coverage or for actual school days worked as per the faculty association contract. We will vote on all three of these when I'm done with all three, okay?
Do we second all three?
Can we, can we do that, Lisa? Can we vote on all of them at once or no?
I prefer that you do one motion at a time.
You got it. I need a motion to approve this walk-on motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Nancy, second by Amador. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. Number two. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of superintendent of school boards of education hereby approves a motion of defiling for the 2020-2021 school year. The Board of Education will hire a board-certified behavior analysis that is needed for the special education students in the universal pre-K. Be it further resolved, the recommendation is for the committee on preschool special education. The district is responsible and required to fulfill this mandate of a board-certified behavior analysis that will be contracted to provide those services. Be it further resolved, John Johnson, certified ABA, will be hired on a contractual basis. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Motion by Nancy, second by Amador. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eligit Central School District, in order to meet the district requirements, it is necessary for the Board of Education to create one special education aid position as a mandate for the committee on the preschool special education. The district is responsible and required to fulfill this mandate. Now therefore, be it further resolved as follows. Teaching staff position will be established. One special education aid position. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Nancy, second by Amador. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Question?
Statement.
Statement, yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
This is my last year of my current term as board member, and it would be my honor to continue with this very successful team to run for another term at the end of this one.
Yep. Yeah, we would love to have you. You've done 15 years, I believe?
It's my 15th year.
Phew, God bless you.
And I think you show a great insight into the academic program as well as the fiscal situation. And I know personally, I appreciate your depth of understanding of what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's great news. I rely on Amador for a few things myself, because he is the veteran here, for sure. So, okay, with that being said, second public comment on anything.
The two, making us trouble with, and other than that, it's it. The other two are current messages to that, not the public.
Okay.
Did Jacob come?
Is Jacob Fisher on?
No, he will not come in.
Well, let me read this.
If I do say this a little bit, your devotion is amazing.
Should I, should I read the AOK?
What's your statement?
Jacob was, this is from Anthony Delevro. Jacob was very helpful in aiding a classmate who was very stressed out. Jacob also helped me in calming the student down and showed great leadership in stepping up. And this award will be mailed to Jacob, and it includes a free ice cream at Lewis Place. And good job, Jacob. We need more acts like that. Thank you.
Well done.
Okay, so our next meeting, is that, is that all? Public comment? We're all set? We're all good? Board have anything? Anybody have anything? All good? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Go for it.
I did have one more thing. The Court Service Rotary will be doing the dictionary project again this year, so we'd like to work with you and Mr. Krebs how that would be best handled. Would we just drop them off and you distribute them, but we'll?
And that's for fourth grade?
Third grade.
Third grade?
Yeah, all third graders get a dictionary. So we'll coordinate that.
We'll, we'll, we'll work something out.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
February 11th will be our next meeting, right, Lisa? The second Tuesday?
Yes.
We're, we're back to that schedule, correct? I need a motion to enter an executive session for personnel issues.
Contract.
Contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Amadores. I, there will be no business after this executive session.
Correct.
Correct.
We should have nothing to talk about. This is contractual for a contract, and, uh, everybody stay safe, and we'll see you February 11th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy, for your help.
Thank you, Tracy, yes.